All right. We're calling meeting order. On the clock, we stand, join the motion. I have said behind you, start us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for all of our people on the front line, whether it's domestic or abroad, helping defend our nation, keeping us safe, ensure we're out of harms way by EMS, police, national defense. Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve the amendment to the public safety meeting from April 1st. This is a motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell, discussion, addition, violation, correction. Are there none in favor, say aye. Any opposed, stands approved. Next, we have a resolution, which I'm actually going to hold off on. You can see the sheriff, yeah, he's in route, so I want to hold on to. He and Mr. Mitchell get in here, so we're going to move into discussion, and I'm going to take up Lake Ontario flooding, because I know that the emergency management director, we are going to have a request in there as well. So, Mr. Courier?
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to change up the highlights or priorities on our submission and turn directly to item six with Lake Ontario. In the last week, the status of the lake has changed significantly. Flooding has started in certain areas sooner than was anticipated, and while some people track lake level by how many feet, inches above sea level, and try to figure out at what point damage is going to begin, it's significantly more dynamic than that, because the biggest player not only is water height, but also wind direction, wind speed, and duration of the wind. I spoke with the people at Greenpoint Marina Sandy Pond this morning. For example, the water is maybe 10 inches lower than it was at this time in 2017, but with a rather strong prolonged wind out of the west this weekend, and one and a half, two-foot waves, they've already started to sustain damage. So, moving forward, we've been in conversation with numerous state agencies since last week. Later today, I got a call from DOP last night, that sandbagging, sandbag filling operations are going to be established in Mapleview, if they're in Mexico, at the DOP facility. The state is going to provide the bag filling machine, a limited number of National Guard troops to fill bags, and the bags, DOP is going to provide the sand. They're looking to us to provide the pallets. So, in 2017, we spent over $8,000 on pallets, and as you remember, we don't have a line item, if you will, in our budget from county budgets for things like this. So, I, on my end, spoke with Mr. Church, Mr. Wilber, and I'm requesting that this committee authorize $8,000 of fund balance to be allocated into the EMO budget that we can allocate towards ordering pallets, which they'll start using tomorrow. So, we'll start with that.
So, we had a need for the $8,000 for the pallets, and I will entertain a motion to move that from fund balance over to...
I'll make that motion.
Motion by legislator Kessler, second by legislator Potter, discussion now.
I just want to ask you a couple of questions. So, from now on, then, the, our towns, highway, or whoever with the sandbags, they're going to go around, protect the buildings, is that correct? More than so than the land, more so than the dirt?
Correct. Yeah. In 2017, it's a great question, thank you. We had a lot of people trying to protect their shoreline with sandbags, which you just can't get enough sandbags to protect against three, four, six-foot waves. So, we will be more diligent as to what people will get sandbags for, and what they're trying to protect, whether they're trying to protect the building, or parts of the building, such as build a berm around basement windows, doors, that type of thing, or you think the flooding from coming across the yard to the house, to use it as a diversion, that's what they'll be for.
Who will make those decisions? Camp owners, business owners, or the EMS people?
That's, that's kind of a tough one to answer. We're going to provide the guidance, we're going to ask people what they're going to be doing with it, and because, and because part of the piece we haven't figured out yet this year, because this is just happening very quickly, is whether people will come to, be able to come to Mapleview to pick them up themselves, as they did before, or we will send them out to the town highway departments, and then they'll deal with the town. But we will put out guidance to the towns, and I've already had the discussion with one legislator that, you know, in the impacted area, that, you know, we can't, we can't protect grass and shoreline, it's just physically not possible.
So, the homeowners really are going to, camp owners, or whatever, homeowners are going to have to really make up their mind if they want to do something themselves?
Mm-hmm.
And then they will go to the town hall, town barn, get, okay, and the businesses, same way?
Same way.
They'll go to the town hall, town barn?
Right.
And request, okay?
So, now we're back at the spot that $50,000 for each property owner that was already spent could potentially be taken out to the lake again, taken out by...
Yeah, actually, we had, we had photos that have been sent in after that last big windstorm, that the windstorm blew out walls that people put in and all. So, yeah, very conceivably, stuff that went in will go out again. And there was, Renee brought up this morning, she had seen online where, you know, the major question is, that comes up, and we had a call this morning already about the IJC and this, that, and the other thing, and, you know, their taxation rate and all. But downstream, Montreal, that area is really, really suffering. They've got some major damage, and when that occurs, obviously, they, they shut back the outfall from the lake, so that they don't wipe out the island Montreal is on. So, they're having major, major problems this weekend. So, I wouldn't be surprised to see, you know, the potential or planned discharge from the lake get cut back even more, which is going to burn, burn our rise up quicker than the United States.
Any other legislators to add?
The possibility of any refund in the money that we'd be spending, or anything?
Well, I don't know if you have any more information, Dale, than what I've seen this morning, is there was just the announcement, so in my eyes, it would, we would have to, in this particular situation, have to spend that amount.
Yeah, I mean, the only way there would be money coming back would be if, again, statewide, it got so bad that there was another presidential declaration, so that there would be FEMA money, but chances of that are real slim.
But the reason I ask that is because, I mean, in the paper, just recently, we see the money's come available for, along the lakeshore, for us to help with the lakeshore, but that's just fill sandbags. Is there a...
What, what money are you seeing?
I can't recall exactly which article it was, it was in the...
What you may, what you may have seen was the city and the port authority getting money, which was back 2017, which they're just starting to get some of now, and that was based on a presidential declaration, to disaster declaration. Just to put that into play, in New York State, the current amount is that there has to be, I think it's 27.4 million, don't quote me, it's right about that, let's say 27 million of uninsured damaged public properties, and then Oswego County, also a threshold of, I want to say, it just changed, so, I want to say around $440,000 of uninsured public property loss before they could even consider requesting federal assistance. So, they had to work real hard, squeeze those numbers in 2017, and it's a very dynamic situation, we don't know what's going to happen, but, you know, this takes in counties all the way from Niagara to St. Lawrence, as to what happens. So, and the government's looking at raising those thresholds significantly here, quickly also.
One more question, legislature. The other four Great Lakes, how are they doing? Are, we're going to get dealt with them sooner or later, are they high also, like we are? So, we're going to get...
Yeah, they've had, actually, what we're getting now is probably a lot of last year's very heavy precipitation out of western Great Lakes. So, this isn't going to go away anytime soon. In this last winter, I believe, they had higher-than-normal precipitation.
More sandbags, should we...
Yeah.
With Canadian, with the Canadian flooding, they continue to hold back the water at the dam, so, and, Richard?
Maybe I misunderstood. The National Guard's going to be filling these bags, or whatever?
That's misunderstood.
Some of them, whatever. These bags get distributed to the towns, or somebody from, we'll say, Greenpoint Marina drives down and picks up both?
No. Depends on how, how the towns can handle it, or want to handle it, and what, what the need is. Early on in 2017, you know, we had lots of people needed bags yesterday, so they went directly to Mapleview to pick them up. That in itself presented some challenges with what they showed up with to pick it up, and I don't know what the guard resources are going to be to handle that this year. Like I said, this came about at 6:30 last night, it should be coming together today.
So, it's going to be a town, extra town cost, and what's from where they're out of, in many cases?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have bags left over from last year, in the last two years or so, but we still going to need more, I'm pretty positive of it.
Yeah, so I, I would make sure that all of the respective legislators for the respective towns along the lakeshore, make sure that they're communicating, your towns are communicating with emergency management, that's going to be key in all of this, and, you know, Dale and his crew are doing a good job trying to stay ahead of it, much as they can, but make sure that the communication is there and stays there during this whole scenario or situation.
Family can in fact...
Yeah, and make sure your towns are tracking the costs.
Highway superintendent, we have some bags, many got enough, but we got some to start.
To Richard's point, too, make sure these towns are tracking, you know, the value of the cost for all this stuff.
They're aware of that. Yeah, in the, in some cases, people still have their bags up in front of their camps or lining their roadways from two years ago. That's the good news. The bad news is, if they haven't been covered with plastic, they're probably already rotten because they're, they're designed to disintegrate.
Oh.
So, we've had a lot of people say, yeah, we went out and did the kick test on a couple of them, and the bags just fell apart, so now they just have sand, which isn't going to do much for them, so. But the towns are cognizant of the cost. I spoke with Mr. Kessler, I guess it was Saturday, excuse me, Saturday morning, and he said, yeah, we got sandbags, but the town isn't in a position to incur any costs or overtime to, you know, for, to bring staff in to help people get bags and such. That's always a challenge, it was in 2017, for the towns to have people to help assist with this. Because people often pull up with their car, or their, you know, their yard utility trailer and say, okay, I want sandbags, fill it up, and that's probably not a town responsibility to do that.
All right. If you're further on that, all in favor of moving the $8,000, say aye. Any opposed, stands approved. Make sure you sign this before you leave. Do you want to continue on with any more of your report, as long as we're there?
Yeah, I have another item on my list. I apologize, it's not on your list, because this came up late Thursday afternoon, but it's very time-sensitive. Those of you who've been on the committee in recent years know that each year, the last few years, we have received a homeland security grant targeted primarily towards activities, equipment purchases, training, et cetera, that we can directly connect back to dealing with terrorism, and the amount is $194,000 and change. In the past, EMO has worked with municipalities, as well as county and state agencies to disperse this money. 25% or about $48,000 is required to go to law enforcement, and then the rest can go out to more to law enforcement, fire, EMS, emergency management, 911, et cetera. And so, we got the information late Thursday, and we have to turn this around and get it back to the state by the 10th. So, we've already set up announcements to meet with various agencies. About a month and a half ago, we gave them a heads up, start putting their proposals together. For those who have not been on the committee in the past, roughly 75 or 77% I believe last year went to, directly to other county agencies. NACR Fire Coordinator's Office, for example, coordinates one project for the I am Responding Communications Module, I think another word, other than module, program that all the fire, many of the EMS agencies use, and others are adding on to it as well. We've had money go to, you know, the Health Department, EMO, for planning purposes. So, about 70%, 75% last year stayed within county government directly, and the other went to mostly law enforcement, or some to the county search and rescue team. So, our intention, unless we're given other direction today, is to move forward as we have in the past, because we don't have this in to the state on the deadline. It's very simple, we lose it and they give it to somebody else, so, so we're on the fast track with this.
You need a motion on that, but...
No, it's informational. Just, I want to make sure everybody is aware upfront that it's, that it's here and what we're doing, in case there were other thoughts or ideas. And with that, everything else on here is pretty straightforward, so I won't trip them more than that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's go back into our agenda. We're starting out with a resolution PS1, which is requesting an amendment to the residency requirement in New York State Officers' Law regarding the position of Deputy Sheriff Corrections Officer, Special Patrol Officer. Sheriff, I don't know if you want to chime in along with the Kelly and Jerry, and get something behind it?
We're trying to start this countywide, as part of the CSI, which we've done quite this way, we're trying to start a countywide school resource officer program. In order to do that, we have to hire retired certified police officers, and quite frankly, we just don't have a pool of enough officers retired that want the jobs in this county. So, we're looking to reach out to adjoining counties to fill those spots. Without it, we're not going to have the ability to fill them.
A little background for, for this committee regarding personnel costs that will be affiliated with this, we will contract with the school districts, they will be under the training and the direction of our sheriff, but they will be contracted by this, each individual school district, so. Legislatur, Mr.?
As I understand, I read someplace that some, one of the reasons we can't give us from the county, is other counties actually take ours.
Correct.
And now, do we pay comparable?
Actually, yeah, we're maybe even, potentially, I set the salary just a little bit higher, so I can maybe steal some of our own people back, and some of theirs.
Okay, that's what I thought there was, uh...
Especially being that it's no cost to the counties, the cost is pushed back to the school districts, and they're lining up, they have the money budgeted, they're on board, they want, they wanted it beginning of last year.
It'd be nice if we could have our own guys back and steal some from somebody else.
Correct. Rich, do you have anything to add that you would like to...
The resolution requests that Albany introduce a amendment to the Public Officers' Law for Deputy Sheriff Corrections Officer and Special Patrol Officer. At present, they must be county residents. Some contiguous counties already have amendments to Section 3 of the Public Officers' Law, which will allow them to hire a suite of county residents to serve in their sheriff's office, as deputy, for example. So, this will go to Albany, see where, if there's any reception, and if they introduce a bill, and then it has to pass both houses, and be signed by the governor. So, this is the first step.
We currently have dozens, if not more, deputies and corrections officers from other counties that live in Oswego County.
Now, Madison County, for example, had already requested this amendment 10, 15 years ago, and it's one of the various amendments. We added the Special Patrol title, even though people aren't certificated in Tennessee, because it's police officers title, police officers that reside in the county, and then the Corrections as well, for recruitment purposes.
And one more thing, if I may, is it's, that doesn't mean we can't give preference to county residents, which absolutely would be my policy, we take care of people living in our own county first.
Okay. Entertaining motion, motion for this resolution, made by legislator Klein, second by legislator Potter, discussion. Are there none, other legislators to add?
I don't think it was going to go away there, Richard. I, I'm sorry, I understand what everybody, what you're saying, I understand what Rich said, I understand what the sheriff says, and I respect everybody's, you know, opinion and what they want to do, I just have a hard time saying that we want to take county tax payer money and pay somebody that lives in another county. I just, I can't go by that. It's something that, if we were going to put something out there that we want people that live in Oswego County, but yet, we're going to hire people from outside the county to come in and take jobs that are available within the county, then people are going to say, well, why do we want to live in Oswego County? I could live in Onvalley County, I can live in Peoria County, I can live in St. Lawrence County, I can, like, Madison County, I don't have to live in Oswego County. And we want people to come to Oswego County, we don't want people, you know, hired from outside the county, and that's, so, you know, I'm going on that precedent altogether.
So, I think you'd be on to something, I heard talking full-time positions that are going to be, in this particular situation, that they were lining up to take for a police officer, you know, they have to take a test, they have to go through a whole scenario, these are retirees, I believe, from what the sheriff's already said once or twice in his conversation, and they're only going to be working in this capacity as an SRO, which is 900, 180 days, sheriff, maybe a few more, or...
School year.
School year, yeah. So...
To just correct you, the resolution, Special Patrol allows retiring retirees, the resolution as written also includes Deputy Sheriff and Corrections...
Corrections officers.
But the reasoning behind the resolution is what I'm getting at.
Right, but it, it's like you're thrown in, okay, you're thrown in a little bit of something, but what you're opening it up to is you're opening up to corrections officers can now can be hired. We, we get this through, and it goes through Albany, we can now hire correction officers outside the county to fill positions, we can hire regular deputy sheriffs to fill positions within the county, okay, that are outside the county. But what we're looking for is, we're looking for actually to fill positions that are part-time positions, which I know are only 180, you know, 180 days during the school year, and the, you know, the school taxes, you know, they're going, they're going to pay for that cost, but that's still taxpayer money, all right? So, if you throw the other two out of there and just put the special thing in there, it's, it might buy it a little bit, but I just can't see it, I, you know, the corrections officers and the deputies, if, if anything, you hire them, and you say, okay, we're going to hire you, but with a stipulation that you have 68 months to move within the city of, you know, the county of Oswego. And if you, if you can't, then I'm sorry, you know, I'm trying to protect people that try to stay in this county. We have people that are going to school, for, for justice, okay, criminal justice, and they want to be in the, the police officer, they want to be sheriffs, they want to be in the corrections department, and here, we're going to say...
All right, yeah, we understand where you're coming from here. Legislator Kessler, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Did I understand that the sheriff said that there is deputies that live in Oswego County that work in other counties already?
Correct.
So, they are living here, another county they work for, they're spending their money in here, they're paying taxes on their property here, so we're, we're getting money from them that live here, even though they're working somewhere else, so, what, what's the difference between the people that live here already, working for another county, when we're trying to get this done?
Legislator Klein?
All due respect to everybody's argument here, maybe I misunderstood, I thought the sheriff made it clear, we can't get rid of people. And here's the deal, if there are retired people, and there's a few of us in here, I'm not moving, not to take on another job, and a lot of us won't. You have a nice place, I doubt you're going to move from it, and I can see that gentleman right there has a nice home, I doubt he's going to move from it. We have to make an incentive here for the people to stay here. I agree, Frank, that they are, I'm actually marrying, they're paying taxes here, they're, they're helping pay some of our other local things, but local stuff we have left. I don't see a problem with this, because we got to get people, that's the, that's what he's saying to us. We need people, not us personally, the schools do, and they've got to be trained, and they have to know a lot of different things, they've got to be able to have relationships with children. I get all that. I don't want a new guy coming out of college wanting to be doing his job, to be perfectly honest there. So, I, Sheriff, I'll, I'll vote with you on this one, you're right.
Legislatur, lack.
If we don't have the trained retired officers here, then I think we have to go to another county, or we're not going to have security for our schools.
I mean, I, I hear what you're all saying, but I know that people are retiring every day from different, you know, from Fulton, from Oswego Police Departments, not every day, but every, you know, every year, we're getting people that are retired, okay? And I, I just say that it's there if we offer it to them, and we want to keep them here. The issue... The issue that says that we don't want new people coming out of school being part of the workforce, being in the corrections, because I asked one of the people that I know that's on corrections, well, I want somebody that's going to have my back. Well, we've got people coming out of colleges every day that live in Oswego County that possibly could fill positions in the corrections department and, you know, as a sheriff. But if they're not going to get hired because they don't have enough experience, well, then why go to school for it? Okay, so I'm sorry, I am dead set on this. If you're not going to change it to amend it to say that after, you know, and I'm not talking about the resource officers, Richard, I'm talking about you're opening this up for corrections and you're opening this up for the road patrol, okay, the deputy sheriffs. Well, you're not just opening it up for the people that are going to protect the schools, okay? That's not what you're opening, you're opening it up to the whole ballgame. We're not just going to cover first base, we're covering the whole field now. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to abide by that. If you're talking about resource officers, it's a different story, okay? But we're talking about corrections officers and the deputies also. Thank you. Okay, just one more thing, please.
Here's the reality, folks, people don't want to be in law enforcement anymore. Number of people taking law enforcement tests right now is now about one quarter of what it was a decade ago. That means the sheriff's department, the city of Fulton, the city of Oswego, Border Patrol, and every federal agency, and the state police are competing for the same people. So by the time we all hire off that list, when it comes out, that list is depleted. We're down to people that are unqualified and we have to make a choice out of those people. If we don't open this up to other counties, we will not have qualified people to fill these positions. Whether it's a corrections officer, a police officer, deputy sheriff, a state trooper, or a federal agent. We just don't have the people if we don't open it up. We're not going to be able to fill these positions.
I just, my last comment, okay, because everybody wants to move on on this. I'll hire as many corrections officers as you want, Sheriff. I'll hire as many road patrol people that you want. But I'm not going to, you know, I cannot abide by hiring from outside the county, I'm sorry. We've got to get them from inside the county or the corrections and the road patrol will hire you. You live in Onondoy County, but you're going to have to move here within six to eight months. The retirees, yes, they're going to protect the schools, no. We're not going to ask them to move to Oswego County for 180 days worth of work, no, okay? Anything else I can give to you, Sheriff, but not this, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other discussion? No, if ever say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, want to oppose, stands approved. Along here.
Thank you.
We have a discussion regarding the Sheriff's Department reporting and record management software. We have two gentlemen from Spillman who's here. And I hope the sheriff, or under sheriff, want to give a brief update again, Sheriff. All right, under sheriff, please.
I think some people from this committee, we've discussed, the state is doing away with supporting the system that the Sheriff's Department currently uses, the SJS system. They've actually stopped supporting that. So when it goes down, our sergeant and training sergeant has been lucky enough to get it back up and running. But our fear is that the more this goes on, the further we delay making a decision on the way to replace that. We're just going to crash one day and have nothing to back up what we currently have. 911 did go to Spillman a while back, I'm not sure how long Kevin would know that. But this is a project that I believe for about two years that Spillman has been working with us. And when the administration changed last year, we kind of delayed everything so the sheriff and I could try to get up to speed on it. For the last three months, we've been trying to get up to speed. We also had a consultant who was helping in the records management for the new facility come in and get on board and ask a lot of questions to the sales rep that I believe he's successfully answered for him. So we're just making sure the eyes are dotted, teeth are prodded, and this program has everything we expect from it. At this point, we believe it does. We asked Spillman to send their reps and we have Bennett Anderson here, who's my main point of contact on it. And also the sales manager, Cameron Housley, is here to kind of give you guys a presentation on what the program is. Because I think they can explain a lot better than I can at this point.
Well said, thank you, Anderson, I appreciate it. So as is mentioned, my name is Cameron Housley, Bennett Anderson, we're here for Motorola Solutions. We're actually part of their, a certain portion of their software enterprise called Spillman. And Spillman is the provider of computer-aided dispatch, records management, jail management, and mobile software solutions for the county. So we want to give you really a high, high-level kind of introductory overview of first, a little bit about who we are as a company, but most importantly, what the solution will provide to you and to the taxpayers and to the citizens of this county. And please, if you'll pardon me, stop and interrupt if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, and as Cameron mentioned, my name is Bennett Anderson. I'm the field sales representative here in Oswego County, happy to be here. I appreciate y'all allowing us this time. As Cameron mentioned, we're going to just give you a brief introduction to the company, which is kind of laid out here. Spillman was opened up into business about 35 years ago and has been in the public safety industry ever since, doing CAD, records, mobile, and jail solutions, all on an integrated system in the agencies that we work with. About three years ago, Motorola Solutions acquired Spillman. They saw Spillman as a unique fit to an overarching software enterprise that we're now a part of, that covers everything from 911 to jail and digital evidence management. So we've seen a lot of investment and research and development go towards our product specifically, but then also to integrate it into a overall holistic software environment that Motorola has as well. Over the 35 years that we've been in business, and the last three of which with Motorola, we have expanded into states, 44, I believe, from coast to coast. You'll see up in the top right there, New York has got 71 agencies specifically. And we drill into that a little bit more on this next slide. Of those 2,000 agencies across the country, and the 71 in New York here, I think the one that's most important to this group here is yourselves in Oswego County. Kevin Pooley led the charge to bring our Spillman CAD system online here in the county. It was purchased in 2017 and ultimately went live in 2018. With New York as a whole, we've been in the state for over nine years. We, all of our deployments, all but one are countywide deployments for multi-jurisdictional integrated systems. And you can see, maybe you can't see those nine counties that are listed. Jefferson County, Tompkins County, St. Lawrence County, Lewis County, Cortland County, Seneca County, Rockland County, Cuyahoga County, and Oswego County, with Cornell University and Peekskill Police Department being our only two standalone agencies. The map over there to the right side of this screen is indicative of the areas that we are currently doing work. And you can see Oswego County is kind of right in the thick of it. So we're going to get in touch a little bit more on our statewide information sharing capabilities a little bit later on. But you guys are really going to be able to capitalize, not only on an integrated system within your county, but within this integrated statewide system that we have begun putting together about nine years ago, like I said, so.
So this slide is just to help give you kind of an overview of the current challenge that you face on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, how we hope to bring together a more cohesive workflow of data throughout your county. So for example, as Bennett had mentioned, right here where it says CAD, that's computer-aided dispatch, that's currently Spillman. The under sheriff talked about SJS, which is Second Justice Service. That's the current and legacy product that's going away at some point with the state. They're no longer going to enhance it, they're no longer going to support it. And at some point, you're going to be faced with the need to go out and purchase a separate records management system. You have a separate records platform, a separate evidence platform, call-taking. So really, what happens here is that when you have disparate or separate systems, it becomes very costly, they're siloed, they're disconnected, there's no flow or sharing of data and information between each one of these systems currently. You have a different provider or support staff that's supporting SJS, for example. Somebody else is supporting CAD, somebody else is supporting, you know, evidence and so forth. And so really, this slide, as you can see at the top, leveraging investments is critical success. So you would be leveraging your existing investment in Spillman and Motorola because you've already invested in your CAD system and sort of completed, complete the puzzle, if you will, which currently is lacking. It currently is disparate, it currently is segmented or fragmented, however you want to put that. But by adding records management and evidence and mobile, you really provide a more streamlined, more efficient system through which all of the first responders in the county will then be able to share data and information on one system, on one platform, if you will. We're going to just really quickly talk about some of the advantages of the system. So one, it might conjure up a few questions, which we're okay with, of course. Two, give you a little bit of a better overview of what we provide from a holistic perspective as a company. Support options, we do provide 24 by 7 support. We've been supporting Kevin Pooley and his team on the CAD system for a while now since he went live. Ultimately, they went live in 2018. And we provide a variety of different methodologies and resources from which Kevin and his team and the greater law enforcement community would be able to obtain support from our systems, whether it be online or the dedicated support rep. His name is Derek Mon, Kevin knows him, has worked with him, among other things. So we do definitely, of course, as you would expect, provide full and complete support of a full system. Also, when we come in and we bring a new system like this, a records management, a mobile, and a jail management system into the county, it doesn't come, of course, without professional services. That professional services includes training. We come in and we train every user of the system. Everyone that's going to be using that platform from day one will be adequately trained on the system. Two, we come in, we say we will be on time and we'll be on budget with that implementation. I had mentioned here unrivaled implementation success rate, that's critical. When you partner with the company, you want to know that they know what they're doing. They've been in business, they have a good reputation, and that they're going to come in on time and on budget for implementation, that's absolutely critical. Access to data and information, sort of tying into what I mentioned in the depiction of the left-hand environment, your current environment, sharing data is not easy right now in Oswego County. So akin to radio communications and how radio is mission-critical voice communications for your first responders throughout the county, what we're bringing to bear is data, mission-critical data communication throughout the county. So that's another layer of what we call interoperability. So the system will provide you with the ability to search up data throughout the entire county, not just the sheriff's department, not just Fulton Police Department, not just Blasky, not just Central Square, not just, you know, Phoenix, right? This is going to provide you with a county-wide, multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional data-sharing environment so that everybody, since you're dealing with the same people, sheriff and under sheriff, and you guys know this, crime is mobile. And you don't want to be dealing with disparate and separate systems with siloed information that isn't widely spread and used throughout the county for a number of reasons, among them, officer safety.
Cameron?
Yes, sir.
Just like on the previous slide, can you give me a flip back to it?
This one here?
Yeah, there you go. The possibilities or options included like the last one, the unmatched learning management system, is that all standard, or is that all stuff that is purchased separately, or if you buy, pack, and steal?
It's included, we've included in your statement of work, so that is included, that is included in the system.
Okay, and just right now, how do we, how do we track training for whatever officers? Is that part of whatever data system we have now, or is it separate?
There's no tracking, no automated tracking.
It's mainly folders, very good work in there.
This is just a depiction to give you an idea. At the top, it says one centralized database with unmatched integration, for those of you that can't read. I know this, some of this typhoon will be small, we didn't know how big our screen would be here today. On the right-hand side, that is a depiction of a server, a piece of hardware, okay? Dispatch, records management, jail, and the mobile, and the field patrol are all functioning off of one consolidated server. So we're taking the current server environment that we have today for CAD and routing to that mobile records management, jail management, so you have one database, one source of information that will supply and support the entire breadth of the platform, if you will, throughout the entire county. So that through one secure in the center, there, one secure login, you have access to, you hope, one name record. Let me just give you a quick example of that. My name's Cameron Housley. Chances are, if I'm a bad guy and I'm in your county, my name might pop up in all of the different databases that are existing throughout your county. I might be over in Fulton, maybe I was involved in a traffic accident in Fulton. I might have been involved with the rash of burglars over in Blasky. The sheriff, you may have pulled me over on a domestic, who knows? You don't have a full breadth and visibility into that information when you have these disparate, separate systems, right? So the idea is you have one database on one system, so that when you bring up Cameron Housley, you automatically see, okay, oh, this is, you know, you have, we do a link analysis that allows you to kind of show all of the involvements or associations that I've ever been involved with, regardless of the agency, throughout the whole county, but it comes from one system.
It also includes photo, right?
Includes photos, it includes, oh, exactly, yeah.
Right, because you, our guys, when they're stopping somebody, giving different names, they're going to put a name in it anytime he's involved with that photo.
It's also going to show you flags. Flags are indicators that if I'm a police officer, I'm a sheriff's deputy, I'm out on the field, I pull over Cameron Housley, I can see that he was involved in a domestic or that he was assaulted to police, or that he was, that he's a sex offender, or whatever the case might be. You guys will have visibility into that in this system because of the way that the architecture is in the system, allowing you to share this data and information throughout the whole county.
So if we purchase a system for our sheriffs, for our county, which means our sheriff's department, some have it in Blasky, but they don't have someone that got, you know, Bob's data system. How does that integrate with all the big technical explanation? You're saying we can integrate from the county with Bob's system and Blasky's?
There are several agencies, including the sheriff's department, that are part of the proposed deal that we're working on right now, including Blasky, Fulton, Phoenix.
Several, it's, several might exclude some more.
Think about the only one that isn't.
Oswego PD.
Oswego PD, their own standalone, and Oswego PD.
Which we're working at doing integration CAD into their RMS, so our information will dump to them. We just won't be able to see the information they have available on that to us.
And I don't want to jump way ahead, is that integrated too with fire, that as well?
It's separate, separate piece.
Okay, good, thank you.
Now, to go along with that, though, so currently, whatever system these individual agencies have, that'll be able to be rolled into this new system, no matter what they have. Is it going to be like, let's say, Phoenix PD has a separate system right now that's way out there? You're going to be able to include it?
Yeah, so we've had discussions, in fact, Kevin's been part of those discussions. We would call that data conversion or data migration. And we considered how, what do we do with the data that exists today in those other databases? And there are good ways to convert that data and there are bad ways to convert that data. And so we've had discussions about converting that not to the live environment, but to an ancillary, third-party database, that you'll still have access to retrieve that data and that information so you don't lose it, but you don't muddy up a new database that you've already started to build here in the county, so. Is that it, your question?
Yeah, yeah. Was that removed from the original? I know we had conversations after I spoke to Kevin about it, moving that from the data conversion package just cost, it seemed like we didn't need it. Was that removed from the bid?
It was not. I think we left it in, because we're going to do something, we just don't know how far back we're going to go. So it might not be to the full extent that it currently quoted.
We wanted you to maintain the ability to have access to that historic, historical and legacy data, but it's just that we're not putting it in the new live database, Sheriff. But we can talk more about that, but you, we wanted you to maintain the ability to have that old data still. And so that's why it's still a state part of the system. So streamlined, multi-jurisdictional data sharing, kind of what we just talked about a little bit. So this is going to allow you to multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional. Really, we wanted this to be a holistic project, right? We wanted this to be a county-wide, Bennett had mentioned 90%, and the system was built this way. 90% of the agencies, not only across the country, but all the agencies here in the state of New York, all those that we just listed off, they're all county-wide, except for the Peekskill Police Department and Westchester County and Cornell University. Every other county, full county-wide, every agency, every law enforcement. Every other county, full county-wide, every agency, every law enforcement agency that's participating and sharing data and benefiting from the system that way.
So how, without a, again, gross explanation, how would we integrate with the state then?
What, what, let me ask you, from the state, what, you're talking about getting information that can be justice in the portal and, and so forth?
Because like you just explained, you know, however, the top of Phoenix and Palasca, it's that because we'd have an integrated system. But we're not integrated with the state's system.
So we already are. So there's, yeah, through mobile right now, what law enforcement has in their vehicles, they can do a state, state-led query and already query that database. They can't update that database in there, they'd still have to do that locally through the E-Justice portal.
So it is live and it's live, real data.
Yes, yes. So querying that database is already, already something that we're doing today.
Okay.
We've made several investments in the state of New York long time ago. Number one, that integration with E-Justice and the portal so that you are able to run those reports out in the field and have access to that. You have NCIC information, you've got the New York domestic.
So it is integrated?
Yeah, exactly.
Very good. Thank you.
This is just a graphical depiction of kind of what we already spoke about. You have an end user, they want to search a name. It allows you to go out and search all the disparate, you know, whether it's Fulton or 911, all the other police departments in the county and sheriff's department and come out and you have one record, one source of truth and one, one source of information that's propagated and available and, and visible throughout the entire county.
Just a couple of things before we did bring pricing as well to discuss with you as well today. Leading up to that, just wanted to kind of give you the model that we follow when we, when we provided your system. 911 and Kevin's team is already on this model with our site license, enterprise level pricing so that you get system-wide access for the entire agency and all of its employees to the entire system for the one and only cost that you're going to see that we're representing today. So that gives you the sense of full ownership of the system. If the agency grows or a new SRO is brought on or anything like that, you don't come back to us asking for additional licenses and how much does that cost? Do we have to pay Spelman? You already have that ability today and that's the model that you would be moving forward with from this point on as well. Just a couple of the, the goals and a few of the things that we were able to find from the CGR, Public Safety Report, that we know that the county heavily invested in last year, or at least that's when the, the findings were released. So we've been working with the county for several years now with a lot of folks from sheriff's department, with folks from Kevin's team. We've done what we call needs analysis. Those are day-long events where we spend the entire time getting to know the department, the struggles, what they need, what they don't have, what needs to be a part of this system moving forward. And then from ancillary reports such as that CGR, we've been able to kind of boil down, and this is probably grossly oversimplified, and there's a lot that goes into these bullet points, but we know, for instance, that you guys need or want system-wide integration. And that's for the, the agency itself. The sheriff's department will be able to share data throughout from its CAD to records to mobile to jail, but then also the, the multi-jurisdictional element that we're talking about as well so that you're sharing information from the individual PDs to the sheriffs, to 911. And kind of skip to the third point there, but you saw that I mentioned the, all, all the PDs, including Quga Community College, that are going to be on this interoperable and multi-jurisdictional system. This is going to move you away from paper records. We're talking about training records and keeping track of that, being kept on file on the shelf. That's just one example of being able to remove the, the paper element. The inter-county interoperability, that's the, the multi-jurisdictional nature that we're speaking to. The interstate interoperability is something that you guys are going to be afforded the ability to join on to as well. Part of the project that we proposed is a module that we refer to as Insight. And the rest of our counties in the state are Insight users too. And they share, they push data to a centralized server, which every Spelman customer in the state that has Insight then also has access to. And if you remember that, you're showing the map and where our Spelman agencies are currently, you guys are right there in the middle of it. So potential ability to share and see information from, from a good bit of your geographical surroundings. And then intuitive end-user functionality. You know, there's a lot of folks in 911 and the sheriff's department on mobile that are familiar with this system already. This is going to be adding, adding value to that, it's going to be adding functionality. The way that I explain it as simply as possible is that you are going to, it's going to be as easy as you want it to be, but getting you to the most pointed and direct information that you need to ultimately. So those are all elements that are going to be built into this, this proposal and this project.
So we want to give you some idea of the long-term cost proposal that we'll present here today, but also hopefully in future opportunities with other committees. I want to take, I don't know how well those of you can see this, but I wanted to break this down for you. This is a, a long-term total cost of ownership, so a, a long-term 10-year proposal. That's what we proposed to the county. As, as a holistic kind of view in terms of adding records management, jail and mobile onto the county. So you have a software cost upfront, you have services. So complete professional services, I mentioned with training, we come out, we fly out, we're trainers, we have project managers, we have implementation analysts, we have system engineers. All of these folks are dedicated resources to your project to ensure its success. Hardware, and then we have a subtotal. Now, you'll see in red here, total discounts. Bennett and I and our team have really, for, and we mentioned, we've been working with you for a couple of years now. When it comes to this discount, we don't just come into a county and present this type of a discount. Down below, those four bullet points, I just wanted to mention, these are really ultimately have factored into why we wanted to come to the county with this level of a discount, almost $350,000 off of the system. One is that, one, you're an existing partner, you guys have been a great partner. And you guys, to me, I've always, I've worked in the, in the state here for over seven years. And Oswego County, among a couple of others in the area, has kind of been a gateway from our upstate central customers into our kind of call north country customers, if you will, the Lewis County, the Jeffersons, St. Lawrence. And for us to be able to facilitate that interoperability and data sharing that Bennett just spoke to, we've always wanted Oswego County to be part of our, our team. And ultimately, by leading off with the CAD system and now by potentially bringing on the rest of the system, that allows us to accomplish that goal, we factor that in. It's a, this is a long-term total cost of ownership proposal. And then we've also put in some escalators in terms of, this is something that we feel like the county is interested in and would move forward with by the end of the second quarter, that we would keep these discounts in place as an incentive to the county. Again, this is a total, it's a total of $1,307,901. That, again, that is a 10-year total cost of ownership for everything that we talked about today. That is your full records management, jail management, mobile maintenance costs, support costs and so forth, for the extent of that 10-year cost, if you will. We wanted to give you another view into how we generated additional costs for the county by proposing this 10-year cost proposal. On the left-hand side here in blue, what you'll see is a traditional maintenance. So customers that don't do the longer-term option ultimately end up paying a little bit more. What Bennett didn't share with you at the outset of our, of our presentation, I guess, is that our average customer across the country, our average customer across the country stays on the system between 10 and 15 years minimum, right? We have some that are 20-year customers, some that are 25. I was up in Maine with Bennett a couple of weeks ago, we have 30-year customers. The point is, when customers come on and they partner with Spelman and Motorola, they stick around. And they grow with the platform. We're constantly enhancing the platform, upgrades, enhancements, bug fixes and so forth. You guys get that, you own that. So you're always on the latest and greatest platform that's available to you. And so what we've said is, what we'll do, if you look at the first year of annual maintenance, the figure is $81,233.
Six.
Uh, 630, excuse me, $633.
I was going to say, we're going to discount.
Totally, it's small.
I can see it.
So what you'll see, that increase is representative of a 5% year-over-year increase. And that is standard. In the industry, you actually see between 5 and 7%. In fact, your previous CAD system, for example, you guys showed an increase in maintenance every year. In a traditional scenario, it's 5%. So it just gives you roughly a 10, a 10-year kind of total cost of ownership where you can expect to pay from a maintenance perspective only. And the scenario on the right, what we're saying is, for those years that you're pre, that you're prepaying, that you're part of the overall 10-year total cost of ownership commitment, we'll keep that maintenance rate flat. We're not going to increase your maintenance for 10 years. What that amounts to is over $165,000 in savings just in maintenance alone, not to mention the other discounts that we've already brought to bear for the county. So most agencies these days, when we present this option, and most are, are going for the long-term deal. And they're saying to themselves, one, this is a system that's mission-critical to our first responders and what we need. Two, this isn't something that you invest in very often. In fact, you guys are on SJS, you guys haven't really ever invested in a records management system in the county, period, ever. And if we invest in it, we expect to partner with a company that's tried and tested, someone that's been around, someone that can, can not walk in here and say, hey, we're the new kids on the block, we have a new system, we'd like for you to try it out. We're saying, we have over three decades' worth of institutional knowledge that we've learned on how to support public safety agencies on this platform specifically. And so you're partnering with the company that's been around. And then we're part of a Motorola who's been around 90 years. We focus exclusively in public safety, that's all we do. So you're not going to be able to see this, this is way too small. What we wanted though, to just at least mention at a high level today is, to provide you with a different vehicle. Motorola, we have our own financing leasing arm. And so if you were to take this, this deal structure, if you will, and factor it into a, a seven-year lease option, we can provide the county with two things. One, we can allow the county to not pay for two years on the system. And two, we can allow the county not to pay interest for two years without any kind of prepayment penalty. So if you were to pay for the first two years, there's no prepayment penalty. There's substantial cost savings options and opportunities you have here in the county. And so just at a high level, I wanted to present that. There is an annual, a number that goes along with that, it's $237,000. That would be annually, right, until you pay the system off. But there again, you would be able to pay that off sooner. And if you did it within the first two years, there's no prepayment penalty, you pay no interest. And we're actually allowing you to wait two years before you pay it anyway, so you wouldn't make a payment to the company. Motorola has their own financing and leasing arm, so we're able to kind of bring these types of financing vehicles to there for a county. And we do this often with counties around the country. That was very high level, we recognize that. This was, this was intended to be high level for purposes of your time. We do appreciate the chance to be here and to present on that generally. We'd love to answer any questions that you have.
I just had more, I got a long bit of support, but I'll save that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, without timeline. So minus talking specs and et cetera, if you started on Monday, how long before it's done? How long before it's fully out there?
I was going to say.
Before work. From day one you start, how unfortunately, how fast?
I was going to say probably a minimum of a year. Typically, we'd say anywhere from a year to 18 months. The only reason it might be on the shorter end of that is because you already have infrastructure in the database and the server already set up here that we're just adding to, but at least a year. So look, so when you walk backwards from that, and I mean, nothing is going to get signed today, but let's say it got signed later on next month.
Regardless of years, a long time.
Exactly.
That's fully functional. What about daily function? I mean, because we, we can't go a year without, you know, where we're currently.
You're going to be, you're going to, you're going to be continuing to use your SJS system in whatever capacity it's available still. We just, that's what it's going to take for us to fully take this system together. And really, there's no other vendor out there that's going to be able to beat that timeframe. If anything, it'll be longer just because, like I said, we've already got the first half of it started. So, no.
So one question though, if, if they start, if they have issues, sheriff's department has issues with SJS there, with their issue, with their software now, is that anything you guys can jump in and help them on? Because right now, we're scrambling if we do have issues.
Heaven forbid something happened to that system and it go down, and that is a possibility. And obviously, that's an impetus behind the project as a whole. We don't have control over their system and the state's system, we don't support it, we don't integrate with it, we don't. And so really, it is, what we can do is prepare for that day when they jump off of SJS and onto the fully-integrated county-wide system. And we do that and, and thoughtfully and methodically and have it prepared. But if that's something were to happen, no, that's not, unfortunately, there's nothing we could do that'll help that.
That's something that Greg Paulman is, he's really pushing. Even if they could help us, they wouldn't be coming to us.
Right. You don't live and agree with it, but you'll be storing that down.
Well, part of it is the data conversion. So we'll take old SJS information. We've already tapped into the system and pulled sample elements out and kind of done that, that homeworking. We'll just be pulling that over as part of the process.
Phil? I think I saw in one of your slides that the first year of the maintenance fee is charged.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
What do you consider the first year, the implementation year, or the first year after we've accepted?
After you've accepted the system.
Okay. It's like right now, CAD is in our first free year of maintenance.
Right, right. We, if, not that we can do this, but if we, what, would you, would you consider any bigger discounts if rather than a, an annual payment, we could pay for the whole system at once?
So we factored in, Phil, a few different things already to the discount that we've provided you. We're actually including Palasca, Quga College, Community Colleges, Community College, Phoenix Police Department, and, get my notes here, and Central Square Police Department. That's something, folks, remember Lieutenant Moscow? He, before he retired or left the county. I'd worked with them years ago, even before working with Kevin on the system. And ultimately, frankly, he did a good job negotiating with us and put you in a very good position. And then we ultimately said, okay, we will include these agencies in the deal. We do that for a number of reasons. One is, we want you to optimize the use of the system. But that withholds in your system of, of data that's not being shared with them or Oswego PD or whoever else. You know, we want the, the broad use of the system as much as possible. So we've kind of factored that in ultimately to this discount that we've provided you today.
Okay. And what warranties do you provide most of the duration?
So the standard warranty is 12 months after going live. And that's, that's standard, not just for our company or for Motorola, every competitor, every system that's out there has a standard 12-month warranty. And then of course, we support that thereafter through the maintenance agreement.
So your maintenance agreement's 10 years, what are we doing after 10 years?
Then it would just be year-over-year. So what, the benefit of doing the, the upfront is that, so this $81,633, then you would go up incrementally in there by 4%.
4%. Well, yeah. Where industry standard is 5% to 7%. If you do this prepaid lease maintenance, then we will commit to only maxing out at a 4% increase year-over-year after this.
And it's in writing with the agreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Or at that point in time, we can go back and negotiate, like we do with the radio, or somewhere we try and go for another X amount of years at a certain flat rate. But then we might have, we could incorporate CAD with correction.
Correct. But you say if you stay, do you have them?
Yes. Not that I'll be here when this gets put into effect, but my concerns are training. Okay, now, I have to go backwards to, I think it was five years ago, when we brought, started bringing CAD on. I think it was before you stepped in, okay? Had individual trained in the 911 center to do the training of the people that were underneath them. And it turned out that that person wasn't the person that we wanted to do that, but it was too late. Now we had to bring and pay extra to have the rest of the people trained. Are we going to run into that situation now or is it going to be an ongoing type of thing that if we've got people that need to be trained on it, are we going to be charged for each person that we have to send in there? Because I think it was last time was $20,000 per person to wait to send in there and be trained.
That was the TRITAC CAD, that was, that was the CAD we just transitioned off of. When we went to Spelman last year, I mean, their training package is completely comprehensive. They do offer either end-user training where we can individually train each person or do a train-to-trainer course. And that was really left up to us on which decision, you know, which way we went with that based off of how the agencies can handle that. Because they couldn't really, all the agencies couldn't handle the overtime to send people in for individual training. So we did do, we did a large quantity of training and they, you know, like Oswego PD, most of their people, and then there was a large quantity from the sheriff's department also. But then we ruled that out further to the train-to-trainer. The good thing is though, is we'd be able to leverage and bounce off of each other with the trainers that, that the sheriff's department would put together and, and the 911 already has. So we'd be able to actually, you know, work off of each other as opposed to. to have to hire them to come back and do another training. As well as with our relationship we have with neighboring counties, we've already got buy-in from them to be able to help support this RMS roll-up as well. So anything to me there, so. So I think this time, I think we've got it covered a lot better than we did when we went with the Tri-Tech, when Mike brought that in, just because there was nobody else in the area that was doing anything like that, and nobody else internally to be able, you know, fall back on.
If I could add on to that, so that, that, and thanks Kevin, because Kevin's been through it, so he's experienced it firsthand, he'd be best, I think, to speak to it. In addition to that, you mentioned surrounding counties. So we have a state user group, and so all of your users would be able to go and to work with our state users across the board, and we do, they usually meet once or twice a year. And then we have an annual user conference, actually, that we come back and keep up with ongoing education and what's new and tips and tricks and best practices and what's changing in the software, what do you need to be familiar with in the software. And then, you know, the learning management system, the online LMS, we have online tools that we can bring to bear as well, so that, you know, you have Susie Dispatcher, if you will, right, there retires, and Linda Dispatcher comes in and says, well, now I need to learn the system. Well, they're gonna learn from a few different sources. One, the local subject matter expert that's there. Two, from the user group. Three, from our annual users conference. Four, from the learning management system, or from our knowledge base, we call it, and from other tools that we have available for, to, to, to train and to provide ongoing support for this person to learn the system. So we kind of approach it from a multifaceted way, from a training perspective, could recognize the value of, and the importance of that, especially when you have long partnerships, like you say, people are gonna retire. You know, Sheriff talked about it's hard, it's hard to hire a new, but occasionally, you're gonna hire a new deputy here. When that happens, you need to have the right resources available to you to become familiar and acclimated with the system and how it functions and how it's used. So definitely, we do appreciate the importance of training and the whole perspective.
I can't see the figures, so what did you say, the $1.3 million figures?
Uh, $1,307,901 and 2 cents.
And we can get you copies of all of this.
I thought you were gonna say you could take the 2 cents off.
I know.
No, we, I think. Round. Yeah, yeah, no. Anything that we need to send supplemental after, after this meeting is.
Get our clerk, Ken, this presentation.
We'll make sure that.
She can.
All right, one more thing, Terry.
Yeah, go ahead and then.
So we started this as a combined project with CAD and RMS and everything. In fact, Lieutenant Moscow and I had, just unfortunately, with, you know, the sheriff knowing that he was retiring last year and we knew there was gonna be a change, they backhandled that portion of it. I hadn't moved forward because of our state link connection, and we had to make some, or otherwise, we would've tried to do this all at one time altogether. Because it really, that's, that's the big thing, is it really is an entire project and deal that has the information that the call takers putting in when we're taking an 911 call, not only show up in a car, but also be there when they're starting to fill out the report and all the way through the entire process. And it's, it's really, the integration is what really makes this whole thing, you know, one, one piece and one, it's really amazing, you know, what they've done. Some of the other software providers can do that, but there's nothing that's really as integrated in this particular package, which is one of the main reasons why we started with Spillman on the CAD side, because the integrations we can do with the other counties. And this just is, is another, you know, layer to it, and it takes a, to a whole other level, so.
Derry.
Thanks, Derry. Cameron, we've been working with a number of different agencies. State police has a way that they can transfer some stuff off from SJS to what we call the Prosecutor's Case Management System. The state District Attorney's Association basically has a case management system that's used by, I think, 55 counties across the state. And we've been trying to find a way to integrate the different systems that come in, just to push information directly into that. So rather than us having to get it from the sheriff's office and upload it, the state police has a way for some of the stuff from SJS to come in. Do you know, do you have that capability in other counties, or are you just working with?
Nifty, I was trying, I was gonna ask you what the acronym, the acronym was, so Nifty, yes, we have worked with them. I would need to do some double checking to be sure that that's something we can do. The system is inherent with a tool we call DEX, which stands for Data Exchange. Without getting too technical, it's, it's an XML query server that allows you to pull data in and push data out of the system. That may be a tool that would work to tie in with Nifty. Nifty, Nifty. Your prosecutor's experience, if that makes sense, okay. So that would, that would be something I think Bennett and I should follow up with to make sure before I tell you definitively, yes, we can. But it does ring a bell that we've worked to get that data integrated through in another county, but I would wanna do my diligence before I tell you for sure.
Okay. And give me the contact person there if you don't have.
Okay.
I need your ID card from you before.
Sure.
Great. Anything else?
I do have one other question, I haven't heard any mention of the probation department. How does this affect them? I haven't heard that mentioned at all.
Well, we did talk about the enterprise site license, which means that the probation department would have full access to the system. You give it to them, so, or however, you guys hit the DA or whoever, you guys can decide who you give access to.
So we can just extend it from the.
Yeah. Give it to them. And have access to it. So, you know, things like, for example, sending case data off to the prosecution, prosecution officer, right? And all of that kind of back and forth and printing of paperwork, you just give them, you know, maybe a query-only or view-only access, for example, to the system, to the case files, to the, to the media, to pictures that exist and so forth, then the system is extensible to these other departments in the county because of the site license that we, that we offer. You have that full access.
And Cameron, not to get in the weeds, but again, with that, like, say from our prosecutors and if we're looking in on it, because again, we have that access to OPD system, the impact system, and for us to pull a report, we have to go up to several different tabs and try to pull information out. With your system, is there like a one-click where it just kind of brings all the reports together, or do we just have print?
So, so the answer to that is, is yes. The, the second part of that is, it is not part of this package, to be just perfectly clear. We have a solution that we call Vault and Judicial Sharing, and that is the exact concept of what Judicial Sharing is, is it brings all of that case file data together into one element of the system, so that you can, with a collect, actually extend privileges to that case file to somebody for a certain period of time and so forth. But that isn't something that we scoped out, that we've discussed with really anyone throughout the, the project. It doesn't mean that we can't, that we couldn't add it on either now or later. And what I would recommend then is that we maybe do a demonstration of that product specifically, Vault and Judicial Sharing, I guess is the name of that, and that would bring you, I think, what you're looking for there.
And if, and if that were something that you wanted to add to this, we could always do a change order even after the execution, so that it didn't necessarily delay anything else.
Until then, and if you didn't go with that, what you do have to, well, you know, you do have something today, the site license, you can extend access to, to the system, you can share data from the system on out as well, just doesn't bring it into that nice kind of cohesive, you know, screening like, like you were suggesting. Okay.
All right, if there's nothing more, then we appreciate you gentlemen coming in, and if we have questions, I'm sure that you can be around.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll respect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving along, Sheriff, do you have anything else to add? Spend your time before I go into the report.
Not relative to that, but just to give you a heads up, Rich Mitchell used them, we're gonna have a couple MOUs coming. I sat with Chief Buckner, Syracuse PD, just some neutralized stuff for bomb squad, which we do not have, and sniper teams. Purpose of that would be to give us jurisdiction and city Syracuse and then jurisdiction out here if we had a major event. And we need that in order for our SWAT team to be state-certified. The reason we wanna do that is because our transfer itself, which will get the team to stay certified. So once Rich Mitchell's done doing that, he'll bring.
Yeah, he, he said probably for next month is what he was happiest to do that, so. All right, nothing else from the sheriff, we'll move along to 911.
Um, I'll just real quick speak to our emergency calls answered within 10 seconds. We're still down in the weeds where we don't wanna be. That's because we continue to cross train the fire dispatching and most of our ships have been stacked at minimum. Uh, just a couple of activity updates this past week. We did have a radio system core upgrade. The core gun, I'm dying to come in, received a major upgrade to 7.18s. And with that, we had all of our switches replaced in all the county sites, as well as all of our PCs and everything at 911 Center for the radio system. And that all went as planned, there was a lot of planning and meetings and coordination that would, could have had major impact on our users, but there was only seconds' worth of impact to the 911 Center, that was all, so that wasn't as planned. CAD, tomorrow we start training for EMS users, getting ready to bring them on the system about a month from now, beginning June, if we're bringing them on. And we're also gonna be holding a couple of refresher trainings for law enforcement over the next month that I'm not able to do since I've put a person into the 911 communications technician position, so able to start getting some stuff done there, so. I'll do everything right here.
Any questions for Kevin? All right, moving along, fire coordinator? Oh, did you have time, Frank?
Still not getting.
Okay, you should have this passed. You're getting me first.
Yeah.
Yeah. You should get me first.
Thank you.
We're gonna back up, I forgot EMS, I can do the EMO, so we'll go on to EMS and then into fire court here, so.
Most of it's, that's okay, most of it's pretty self-explanatory, I just did wanna highlight that our EMT results are in, and all seven providers passed, so we're very happy about that. So EMS, annual EMS Advisory Council banquet is coming up, so if that's something you're interested in attending, when we honor life-saving awards and individuals who have been selected as ALS, VLS, RN, et cetera, Providers of the Year, you're welcome to join us the 17th. See me for ticketing.
Questions for Renee? Moving along, fire coordinator.
Thank you. Again, pretty basic. We are in the middle, in the very beginning of our major training. We're actually in the middle of a three-week initial training class for nine-mile point for 18 new operators. And as things will go, when we first start off and get things running, things start to break, so spent some long days for the last week and a half, and so far, so good. That class goes again rest of this week and next week, then we start brigade refresher Just completing a round of battalion meetings, last one is tonight in West Monroe. Bob and I completed our 24 hours of annual recertification training for code enforcement, and found out that the international building codes will be going to a new 2000, can't say new, they'll be going to the 2018 version next year, 2020, which means more training and we'll have to replace all our reference books and all that great stuff. What are the other major undertakings going on right now? We have a meeting tomorrow for the sheriff and his corrections people to put together an evacuation plan for the jail. That's moving forward, we have one meeting and a tour, and then we have another meeting tomorrow morning, and moving forward with that. And we're gonna try and put a schedule together for fire drills for all the other buildings, trying to look and see when the weather's gonna be conducive.
Glad to hear it.
All right.
There's nothing yet, so.
Probation.
You just assumed you were the last one, so. Our race age plan was approved, the overall plan was approved, we found out recently. Couple of caveats to that is, they did not approve any of the costs related to the county attorney's office or the district attorney's office. According to the state, what they're saying is that all the resources should've been shifted from the district attorney's office to the county attorney's office as the DA will no longer have those 16-year-olds of adults, so they will be prosecuting that in criminal court, so. I asked about an appeal process to that, and they said there isn't any.
So in other words, because what we're funding already, the portion under the DA's office, we should just move that funding to the county.
That's what they're saying. Yep.
They did, it may also suggest that we might be able to recover some of those costs by having a claim through the SS.
I, the SS is gonna be responsible to do something for all of the claim except for probationary expenses. I don't know, I didn't see where they said they were gonna be able to pay for any of those reimbursement costs.
Yeah.
Because across the state, I've spoken to other directors, other departments that were approved before us, and they said that across the state, they haven't approved any of those expenses.
You can actually tell us.
I know, the thing is, right, they asked us to submit all those costs over and over and over, every time we advised the plan, they wanted us to modify the request for those two departments, and now they're saying you can't reimburse any of them, so.
They figured out how much it was.
Well, maybe. Which is true that some of the 16-year-olds, you know, most of the 16-year-olds will now be at the county attorney's office or else with probation from conversion, so it is gonna take work away, but, you know, it, it's, those cases are more work for the county attorney's offices, they need to vet the district attorney's office, just because ongoing, you know, family court, there's a lot more appearances, there's a lot more, is what it is at this point, but probation fees, we were approved for all of our expenses. Just have to find out how we're actually gonna claim those expenses.
Hopefully in check and not two hours out, but.
Well, we, yeah, and we have requests at probation office, probation we had costs, but those costs were based on projected numbers from two, actually from 2017, our numbers have not come anywhere close to the projected for probation. We'll have to hold off and see what happens if that.
Jail-based.
Yep. Groups are, the thinking for change groups are going great in the jail, we've graduated seven inmates so far, we have another group scheduled for the start in two weeks, we've got eight defendants, we can start that, so. We seem really into it, and it's working out well.
Any questions for probation? There you go. All right, your year-to-date valid reports are in there, if you have any questions, see Phil or the department, we expect the department head. Nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and, but hold on, I'm gonna read you that, I just wanna give everybody a heads up. We have a new jail physician who's really going guns-a-blazing here, doing a great job. We're trying to, we tried to get him in for here, it's scheduled in for that, so we're trying to do a joint meeting with finance and personnel on Thursday. Tend to be, we have that scheduled for 3 o'clock, right, immediately following finance and personnel, so. Back to the motion to adjourn, Officer Potter, second by Officer Klein, I'll pay her, say hi. Thank you, everybody, have a good day.